Patrick gets settled, we'll be ready to start.
Oh, sorry. I throw away my caps.
Mr. Patrick.
How are you?
And he's always been like so positive. He tries to repay.
Okay, we're about ready to get started. So, the county's gonna give us a little presentation on wayfinding, how far they are now with our act. So, I don't know who from the counties.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't mind. Hi, everybody. My name's Brian Slick, I'm Principal Transportation Planner for the Ulster County Transportation Council. I'm here with my director, Dennis Doyle, who I think needs no introduction to this committee. And we're really happy to have John Bosio from Merge and Bound Design here with us tonight. He has been working with us in the City of Kingston on the Connecting Kingston Wayfinding and Signage Plan. This was a project that the city applied for under our Unified Plan Work Program around 2017, I believe. We've been working on the project for about one year. We have a technical advisory committee that's been assembled with a really talented and helpful group of people from a lot of different segments of the city. And we've been working on this project and getting up to this point. We wanted to give the common council, the caucus members, a preliminary presentation to let you know how far we've come. We are getting near the end and we're going to be doing one final public presentation. We wanted to give you the first taste, so that in case your constituents have any questions or you yourselves have questions about what it is we're trying to accomplish here, you can have, ask us at will. And of course, you can always follow up at a later point in time if you have follow-up questions. I'm gonna give the floor to John in just a moment. But wayfinding, I think, we've been learning a lot about wayfinding from John and his staff at Merge. They're very talented as designers and as planners. I think an important takeaway about wayfinding is, and signage is, you shouldn't necessarily notice it as you travel through a municipality or an area, but you should understand it. And that's what good wayfinding is, from my perspective. It's these cohesive systems that make people feel secure, safe, and somehow intrinsically understand how to navigate really complex places. And I think most of us here probably lived in Kingston for a long time. I'm a newcomer to Kingston. I've been here seven years and I can tell you. We all know Kingston is a difficult town to navigate. And signage and wayfinding can really play an important part in making sure that visitors and residents alike are comfortable in maneuvering throughout the city and getting to where they want to go. And not just motorists, but pedestrians and cyclists as well. So, I don't wanna take away John's presentation and he can really explain a lot more about wayfinding than I can. And so, John, why don't you take it away and we can answer any questions you may have at the end.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you, everybody, for having me here tonight. I'm just, I'm gonna give you a sort of update of where we are. If you think of the wayfinding program in sort of two, actually, three aspects of it. There's the strategy or administration of who gets included, where does the funding come from? When a sign gets hit, who's gonna maintain it? That's something we've been working through with the TAC. The second part is the wayfinding of how people get from point A to point B. What's the best route? Where do they park? What are the district names? Sort of what is that sequence of information? I'm just gonna sort of summarize a couple of the highlights that we talked about during the process. And the third part is the design. What is the, what's the aesthetic of the system? How does it capture the character and culture of Kingston and be unique to this particular place? I think one thing that's important to note is that we are not adding to what's out there. All wayfinding signs that direct to different destinations. All those things come down and you get a consistent system. So, like right now, you get to a lot of intersections and you'll see three or four different signs, all different sizes and colors and shapes and mounting heights. That comes down and a single panel goes up with the listing of that information. So, it's really gonna cut down on a lot of your signage clutter when you start to look at it because now you have a coordinated system. It's not just people running out there, running out there putting up signs everywhere. Just real quick about our gathering process. We had a technical advisory committee, as Brian mentioned. We also had numerous stakeholders. So, when we started this process, we had a series of interviews with some of the key destinations. Interested party, improving agencies all came in. We've had a series of community meetings and public input throughout this. We've also have done online surveys and intercept surveys out in the field. So, some of the designs that you've seen, that really went out into the community to get feedback. You can see there from the statistics, we had 245 completed surveys, more than a thousand comments, although we presented. All three districts were really evenly represented when we went back and did the count of where the information came from. Things like inclusion of sustainable materials and local architecture really rated high as we went through the design process. And we also had some comments regarding the inclusion of local art or artists as part of the design process. We did go back in February, went to the Art Commission to talk to them about how that might be incorporated into the program. Also, we'll talk a little bit about this. I will tell you that the number one question we, or topic we've talked about throughout the wayfinding portion of this was what to call the three districts. Hands down. This was pretty uptown and midtown were pretty much settled, but what do we call downtown? Or down here, the waterfront, do you call it downtown? Do you call it waterfront? I think there were seven different names that people referred to it. Waterfront, do you call it rondad? Do you call it downtown? Do you call it?
Rondad.
Rondad.
Do you call it? Riverport was another name that people came up with.
So, what did we settle on?
So, we settled on, we still will have rondad as the historic district and we still will direct to it. And it was still being identified as part of the system as a sub-district. But waterfront is the larger area. It really rated high among the preferred names at 63% of the surveys that we maybe got back.
Were all these surveys, they were all Kingston residents who took them?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's about 350, I think, was the response rate. And it wasn't just an electronic survey. We actually did face-to-face surveys in each neighborhood where we had placards and we walked up to individuals.
Yeah, and if you think about it from a visitor's standpoint, right? And getting orientation from within a wayfinding standpoint. You wanna sort of know where you are within the larger context of the city, so you can sort of get that cognitive map. So, uptown is very clear as to that sort of at the northern end. If you say rondad to someone who's never been here before, that sort doesn't give you a cognitive understanding of where you are within the city. Waterfront, not only does it let me know where it's near from an orientation point, but it's also from a marketing standpoint, it's something that you can market. From an economic development standpoint, it's something that is really clear.
In traveling in other towns, they always use waterfront as a designation for.
Waterfront, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's a common terminology that people sort of recognize. It also tells you what the activity is down there.
Yeah.
We did have some discussion regarding uptown or uptown business district. We were sticking to sort of the shorter version of that, although we will be directing to shopping and dining in a more generic way. The program does not direct to private businesses. We're not allowed to do that. So, we're really directing to nonprofit entities and attractions, government facilities, parks and rec, historic signs, those kind of things. Some other additional wayfinding issues. On the roundabout, as you get off of 87, I come through that way every time I come here and I just go through it again tonight. That has all kinds, I mean, if you go through it and you really pay attention, there are probably a hundred signs on that circle. One of the issues is that it's outside of your boundary, so we still are gonna look at it as we start to sequence the information. But we will have to start to talk to DOT about that. And some of our next steps are looking at gateways into the city. So, as we go through the designs, gateways are very specific to the location and the environment that's presented. So, in some cases, it needs to be a tall vertical element, other cases, it can be horizontal. We really want to settle on the design aesthetic before we tackle those things. So, we went through a schematic design phase and there were three design options that were presented. This was option number one. This was option number two. And this was option number three. So, really, as we went through this, this was sort of a color-coded version with the header, giving sort of a unique finial in some of the districts, having a bracket on the back, having a kiosk element with the brick. This was more of a sort of brighter sort of sense to it, more sort of on the creative side. And then, this was more sort of about natural materials, bringing in stone and some more organic feeling patterns on the back. And again, these are just conceptual. So, what came out of that was that option one really was the basis for design as we went through the survey process. The color scheme from option one, color coding with district names, but not using icons. People did not wanna get into having like a logo for every single district. The strong inclusion of local character was something that came out of the discussions that we had with the public. Accents that represent creative artistic energy. So, not that it had to be overly sculptural or anything like that, but there should be some accents. And they really wanted us to make it clean and simple. So, that was our sort of goal as we went into the final option. Other things, people liked the kiosk from option one, the gateway from option two, and the stone from option three. So, based on all those comments, and it's not, I will tell you, I'll be honest with you. When we got all the comments back, for every comment that someone said, "I like this, it's modern and simple", someone said, "I don't like this because it's modern and simple". And we must have had like 10 comments going like this. And it wasn't really the easiest thing to sort of, it wasn't like, "Oh, we just like that one and we're done", which, to be honest with you, never happens. So, we simplified it, removed some patterns from the backs of the signs. We limited the bracket designs and you'll see we have one bracket per district. Really, a single shape throughout the system. And you'll see how we brought in some of the local character with the finials. We talked about the artist opportunities with the commission. Base materials relate to the district and we sort of combined Birkenstone. And the gateways will vary slightly for each district. So, we went back, you know, based on the comments that we got and we said, "Well, let's look at some of the local architecture and architectural details in the buildings." And we sort of gathered components of where this can fit into, not only the shape of the signs, but also some of the finials. So, this is the option four. And you'll see how we brought in some different things. So, again, option one that we originally showed, displayed was that, that was the basis for design. I'll show you some of the gateways and some of the kiosks as well. So, let me just sort of go through some of these. So, we brought in the brick again. People really like the idea, even from the historic reference, the use of brick, but also with a little bit of a stone accent. The backs of the signs, you'll see the brackets in a moment. Each district will, so this is the bridge sort of turned on inside. We have the color palette of what, blue for the waterfront, orange for midtown because of the midtown arts district, so that sort of fit in nicely with them. And then uptown, we're showing green. We had some discussions about yellow as well, so that may go back and forth a little bit. Again, gateway signs, vehicular directional, public parking signage as well. These are the gateway elements for each of the districts. So, for the midtown, it has a little bit more sort of energetic version of it. And then, as we go into the waterfront, it becomes, comes down in size and scale. There's an existing sign there. But we're also bringing in sort of that translucent look into the back of that too, sort of playing on the idea of water. And then uptown as well.
So, where are these gonna be located at? It's gonna be a sign just like this says uptown.
Right, so we are, we're still in the process of getting the exact locations for these. This one, there is a sign if you go down into the waterfront in the median, right? That would probably replace that one at that point. But we're still looking at the locations for each of these.
And there would just be one, there's one gateway into each district?
No, we'll see if there's multiple. And then, there could be a different, there could be a different configuration of one. If it's a smaller gateway in, there could be a smaller version or maybe even just a post and panel. So, that'll play itself out a little bit with the configuration and size based on the program.
Well, we have a couple of gateways into the city though, right?
Right. Right, so there will be gateways, yeah, there will be gateways into the city as well. Now that we've sort of arrived at this design, we'll start to design the gateways. For more of the historic districts, the signs generally come down in scale. Here are two different versions of what it might be based on the amount of room. So, it may be a smaller sort of brick monolith or it could be a post and panel. We'll still decide on which, where those go as well. And the vehicular directional signs. So, the vehicular signs, we are guided by traffic engineering criteria that we have to follow. So, four-inch-high copy when we're on the slower speed roads. We only have three messages per panel. That's the rule that we have to follow. Everything will be reflective, so you can see it at night when the headlights hit it. Breakaway elements will be contained within the base portion of it.
Now, what will be decided, who decides what's the three elements are gonna go on each?
So, the TAC is working through a destination list. And then, really, that's determined by the sequencing of the route to get to that destination. If everything's going in the same direction, then it's whatever you get to first is listed. If there's multiple directions, the engineering criteria is whatever's straight, left, right, is the sort of order it goes.
So, you can, you wouldn't be able to add signage to this then, right? Once the three are on there, that's it, it never comes down and be replaced by new?
You'll go back in, usually you go back in five years and you sort of reevaluate and then you maybe resequence it.
Okay.
You can't add to those.
Once you have three, no, you would have to go back.
So, that waterfront, Maritime Museum and Visitor Center, that's three?
No, no, that's two. That's two directional information. They all will have the waterfront.
All right.
And you guys, that's still being decided then, what's it gonna be, three? All right.
So, again, these are the three, looking at the three districts and the color coding and then the finials. So, each of those finials was selected for each of the districts. And then, these are the brackets for each district. So, we worked with the midtown arts district to talk about using like a gear element. That's something that they're certainly incorporating, I think, in some of their branding. And then, these were architectural elements from uptown and then the bridge from the waterfront. So, you can see, you know, just the panels, you know, there's a, with wayfinding, there's a certain amount of anticipation. You want the driver to understand, so they'll see the shape from a distance and then they start to realize that they'll be getting information shortly. Parking, directing to parking and then identifying the lots.
That's a separate, that'd be a separate poll or whatever for parking.
Yeah, and we're also doing an order of magnitude budget. So, you know, the parking could be its own separate little sort of signage project as you go through this. And then, some more pedestrian information. So, I think you'll see, you know, uptown is definitely gonna get a lot of pedestrian signage. And then, for directional information, maybe some maps, some lower-scale pedestrian. Still deciding where certain types of signs may go. And then, there are kiosks. So, the kiosks, I'm sorry, here's the pedestrian signs. Smaller scale copies, you cannot read it from a car, it's like an inch-high copy. We don't want you to be able to almost read it from a car. We just have to slow down and try and read it. So, it's purposeful for it to be one inch. And then, the kiosks. So, the kiosks, we'll still work through with the TAC as to what should be on each kiosk, but we've sort of highlighted here that there could be a panel that is wayfinding information, that has a map. There could be an interpretive panel that talks about the history of the place. And then, also, you could have an artist opportunity as part of the panels as well. And that may vary from district to district, from location to location. Those TAC members that represent those areas probably.
Front or back? Front or back? Could there be information on the front heading down the hill and then artwork on the back?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it could be, this is a side view. These are designed as four-sided, so, or three or four-sided, so.
There'd be four panels, there'd be four panels.
Yeah, there could be three panels or four panels.
And where would they be located? Next to the gateways or?
No, they're typically located at key gathering points. Or at like, when you, as you come a pedestrian, get out of your car and you come out of a major parking area, it might be located there. So, again, we're still working out the locations. So, again, this shows how it works. So, it's consistent all the way throughout the town where you always know where to get information with the eye. You can always look for that structure as a cue. You know, we had lots of discussions regarding the base. We had discussions where each district could have different materials. But then, ultimately, we sort of worked that through that if we use the brick and sort of a stone accent throughout town, that sort of worked, worked everywhere. So, there's lots of potential features in the kiosks. You know, you could have a district map, a citywide map, changeable event information, community postings, interpretive story, art features, the structure, that canopy roof. You could have a brochure holder. There's things that we're working through with the TAC. If you wanted to make these digital, you could, and that's just really a cost issue. So, then we've dropped these in, so you can start to get a feel of where, how they might. These aren't exact locations, but it gives you a feel for how they look in the environment. Just really cleans up, sort of organizes the information just down the waterfront. There's a sort of kiosk down in there. So, there's a midtown one. There's a, there's a sign there now, but it's actually parallel to the road. So, if you're going down Broadway, you would, you probably doesn't even know it's there. There's the waterfront.
Yes, the waterfront, yes.
So, we're really sort of entering into sort of the tail end of design development. We are locating where signs go. That's an ongoing process. You know, some configurations may change, a couple of additional sign types here and there. And then, ultimately, we will put it into a big package that can go out. We'll work with the TAC to put together a priority list of, they're not all just gonna drop out of scotty one day and be there. You probably have to do it maybe over a couple of phases, which we've talked about. And we will, you know, just based on our experience, sort of work through with the group that kind of information.
Miami, Mike, Steve?
I'm just gonna make a comment. I saw this, I thought, I think I was at the first one and I was really pretty chuffed about this. I thought it was really cool. Couple of months later, my wife and I were traveling during the summer. We stopped at some little place down in North Carolina. And we got down, we were walking around and we went to the water. We saw a sign for the waterfront. Well, the signs were, if it's not this, it was like so close. So, we're walking around. It was really, really well-done. It was nice. And I'm, of course, I could see what's coming, so I'm asking my wife, "What do you think about this?" You know, I'm giving her a little quiz, you know, and then I told her, "This is what we're gonna do". But it, I don't know, it gives you the feeling that, eh, this is a town that really cares about its visitors. I mean, it was really nice. They were clear. They were easy to read, understandable, you know, with the water, you know.
Where, do you remember where you were?
Yeah, Washington, North Carolina.
I do a lot, we've done a lot of, a lot of towns in North Carolina, but not Washington.
Yeah, but we found our way to the waterfront, you know, using the signs. We got down there and there were, you know, various signs. They had a, you know, a River Walk kind of thing, you know, with some restaurants.
I think it'll help, you know, when you're in uptown, you're not gonna see destinations that are in the waterfront like listed, but you will see signs for the waterfront all the way in uptown and that will, you know, for me, as a first, I'm not a first-time visitor anymore, but the first time you come here, you actually have three little downtowns. You know, it's sort of a perception-wise. And I'm in uptown, I could think that that's downtown. I don't know if that's the waterfront. They all feel like sort of a business district or a quarter. I think it would be helpful that when I'm in uptown to know that you have a waterfront and I can easily get to it.
Can you say anything about the budget for something like this or costs of?
That's what we're working through.
Financial aspect, however you wanna address that.
Yeah, that's what we're working through now is the order of magnitude. That'll be, a lot of it will be based on quantities. And we'll give a breakdown of priorities. I don't know if you wanna talk about grants and stuff that you're looking at.
So, how's this correlate with the county, which is where you're from, with the City of Kingston?
Well, the City of Kingston does have the DRI. And I believe there's a specific line item in the DRI identified for signage and wayfinding. Of course, that is limited to uptown, so how that, those funds can be distributed throughout the city is a decision yet to be made by the city, is my understanding.
Is that even our decision or is that, I thought that just is earmarked for uptown?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly how the governor's office is gonna handle that. But it definitely is seed money, I think, that can lessen the overall cost if you're going to try to do this through, essentially, through segments. You, the town of Rosedale, for example, they started with, I believe, their gateway signs and then worked through another grant to follow up with some additional signs.
They got a Greenway grant. Rosedale had a Greenway grant. If you down at Rosedale, you'll see similar type of signs in Rosedale right now.
Right, so you can, you can break this out over a period of time and work on some of the more important, larger signs that the city finds important and then work toward, once you get, people get a feel for it, you're comfortable with it, you can continue to add on after that.
Yeah, the phasing will obviously depend on the available funding as it comes through. I would say here that gateways are fine, but I think you wanna get some function out of the system. And directing people to the different destinations, to me, would be sort of priority along with maybe parking. So, getting people to parking is always sort of higher than, I mean, gateways are nice, but it just sort of announces it. I wouldn't move people around as much as possible, but we'll still figure that out.
Makes sense. Suggestion, could you call it the rondad waterfront district?
Every word costs money, you know.
Jay forget district, it's called the rondad waterfront.
Well, even, even just like maybe the gateway one, you know, 'cause it would be a lot more adding that to each of the smaller signs, but maybe that's something that's right there.
Yeah, one of the things that we've talked about also is just having an interpretive panel on the kiosks, even a section in all the districts. It talks about rondad. So, that you're sort of explaining the history of it, so that if someone uses the word, it's not completely foreign to your understanding of what Kingston is. We will be directing to it, to the border of the historic district. So, it's not like we're not directing to it, it's just that as you get through this and you get to the actual boundary of that district. Because not all of the waterfront area is part of the National Historic District. So, that, it will be, it will have a sign at the edge of it.
So, the schematic designs that you've seen tonight are on the UCTC website. I can get that link to you at a later point in time, but if you just Google Ulster County Transportation Council, I have, this project is focused right at the top of our webpage. And as John mentioned, we'll be rolling out the draft plan, which will really provide a lot of the details of how you implement this program. That'll be out in the next four to six weeks, I suspect. And we would like to have a public meeting at that point to present those findings to the public. Date and format is yet to be determined, but it'll come sometime soon, March 8. Of course, we're in.
But that wouldn't be a meeting to public feedback, right?
We're always, at the Transportation Council, we're always open to feedback. And of course, we've gotten to a certain point in the design process where the design, schematic designs are largely complete. We're definitely open to further input, but at this point, we're not gonna, you know, redesign the overall signs. But the placement of signs, if there are destinations that we may have overlooked, we'll have the list of destinations available. There's still opportunity for some input from the public. We will be able to take ownership and become familiar with this.
And the locating of signs, we go out with probably Public Works from the city to make sure that every place that it's appropriate.
So, this is brick and mortar, is that what that is?
Yeah.
How long does that last out in the wind and rain like that? Do you have any idea?
The brick?
The mortar and the brick, I know even when you get it wet, kinda.
Bluestone man for a hundred years, ever.
Is there any date on it? You mean, do you have a?
How long the brick will last?
How long will that brick and mortar last out in the weather like that, without a cover on them? Longer than you, Pat.
Okay, just checking.
And on, piggyback on what Pat's saying, the bases in brick and mortar, the other, the other part around that, what is that?
Oh, that's painted, that's aluminum.
That's aluminum?
That's metal, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And then, these were, these were sort of translucent acrylic panels and then this is all aluminum.
So, nothing's wood?
No, no wood.
And so, so say, like, the signs, we wanna in five years come back and change it because we, the lot... And so, so say, like, the signs, we want to, in five years, come back and change it because we, the library moved, whatever. You just have all the, your company has all the designs, and that's a pretty easy process?
Right, we, I should admit, we are not fabricators, so we just design and plan. I will tell you that in the past year, we've gone back to three projects, Frederick, Maryland, Asheville, North Carolina, that's maybe from Asheville, and downtown Tampa, and they've brought us back because we've been like five or eight years out. And we've relooked at their system from a messaging standpoint. Things have moved, they've new destinations, changed names, that sort of thing. The great thing about all those projects is the design has not changed. It still fits their community, and really what we're looking at is, you know, the operation of the system has, has changed because the city's changed.
We're finding at the county, there's design, there's sign fabricators all over, and there's new ones popping up. And John has some familiarity with some of these fabricators, so you would put it up to bid.
It's all standard materials, there's nothing sort of unique about this. We talked about using local brick in here as well, so.
They do get master design books as well.
Oh, yeah, so you, right, so there's, you'll get all the specs, just basically a guideline that if you needed to order one down the road, you'd have all that info, that's part of it.
So you're gonna supply the design information?
Yeah, all the specifications.
We have to go and find some funding other than what we have available now.
Right.
So that's gonna implement the whole.
But we'll also give you a phasing plan to say, okay, if you're gonna, this is how much it would be for each one, yeah.
Okay.
So thank you for your time.
I have another question, sorry, I have another question. My ward heads down towards, you head down and you go right down to Kingston Point. Do you have any plans for that kind of sign, down to, down to the Hutton Brook yard, Kingston Point area, coming for, off of Broadway by the Rondow Savings Bank there?
Yeah, the entire city is gonna have a sign planned for, and every part of the city, even Hudson Park, you know, that's my neighborhood as well.
Yes.
Um, we ran into it the other day. Um, yeah, it's, the parks will have signage to them, it depends on the destination, it's their destination.
Waterfront.
And waterfront, it's also Hutton Brook Yards, and there might be, you know, other park areas, so it, it will definitely.
I call it Delaware Business District.
I don't know if we have that.
Those three businesses in there? Those three, the two bars and the, two bars and the antique store that's closed.
I mean, ultimately, we're, we're putting together, you know, a, a plan for the city that will, we hope, make your lives a lot easier as decision makers, but ultimately, the decisions rest with you and your department.
I've been promising these people signs, these three, two bars and the, and the empty store there. Not kidding, I'm not kidding.
These signs aren't for.
So all the schools that will have signs?
I'm not sure if all the schools will be included.
Typically, we direct to high schools, where you have, you know, a stadium or a theater where people from out of town are coming, but we typically don't direct to elementary schools.
Everybody who's going there knows where they're going.
You don't need to.
It's usually the high schools.
Keep people away from.
From college.
The college, yeah, college.
So we have, so we got a high school, we got a college right next to each other.
Yeah.
Hospitals.
Disney White Sign.
Correct, yeah, all pointing in the same way.
Okay, we good? Let them go on their way?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Thank you.
Brian, Brian, right?
Yeah, thanks. Slack, problems out.
Okay, so.
I know, I just knocked on his door. He might, he might be a disrespected, you. Yeah, I do have farts.
That's not me talking about, I wasn't wearing a heavy diaper.
Got to get signatures for this guy. We think that opens a kind of worms? Yeah, so, we'll be here so.
As long as we can get that quiet zone for the trains, so.
Okay, just, so you know, Renee's not here this evening, so I'm gonna be chairing the caucus. And Bill's in the motherland there, so he will be. Excellent, when did he go?
About Saturday.
It's whoever you come.
Bill's in, uh.
Just motherland.
No, Bill's, Kerry's in the Ireland.
He's in Ireland?
He's in Ireland, yeah.
Only do it once.
Okay, so we're going to, we're in session now for caucus. We're going to start at resolution number twenty-five. We got approval for a modification to the two nineteen parts and rec budget. Kingston Point Beach ADA accessibility improvement strike.
Sounds good.
Any questions on that? I wasn't at the caucus, and I know there's a lot of year-end stuff here.
Yeah, most of these things are, you know, carryover, unspent funds, budgetary transfers with, with no financial impact, or bonding in anticipation of contract, grants that have not yet been awarded, but when they come in, the bonding will be used to pay for those projects. I mean, it's all pretty, most of this is pretty cut and dry stuff, I think.
Any questions?
On which one, twenty-five? Yeah, carryover, unspent monies. Twelve thousand five, just grant revenue going into capital improvements.
That's fine, there's no questions, so we can go on to twenty-six.
Retroactive pay to CSEA and non-aligned employees as, as we have previously approved from hospital and medical accounts into various other sub-accounts. But these are things that are, you know, previously approved by the council.
On twenty-six, no.
Twenty-seven is more of the same.
Retro pay raise for CSEA non-aligned employees, I understand that. Okay?
Uh, number twenty-eight is to utilize some monies from the fund balance for purchase of some vehicles that were not able to be made last year because we just didn't, they, they, they didn't get the quotes, so we're looking for reauthorization of the original funds. Three vehicles, hundred twelve thousand, five hundred dollars, but, you know, nothing new here.
What departments is going to? Fire, fire department?
Building. Building safety, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, building department and parking enforcement.
Okay.
I think the thing was, this is the right one, that we just didn't have the car available. Is that correct?
Yeah, right.
They weren't available?
Right.
It was the police that didn't have the car available.
Now, the next one.
Because I remember Julie talking about it.
Twenty-nine, we, we have a very, an hour discussion on transferring thirty-six dollars ninety-one cents with the planning department.
What?
Sounds about right. Million dollar one, you just.
Yeah, yeah, thirty-six ninety-one.
Anybody want to hassle on this one? Okay, uh, number thirty is, we've got a couple of these. Correct year-end shortages in optical insurance. Transfer from retiree hospital and medical fifty-six hundred ten dollars into a boatload of optical insurance sub-accounts. No financial impact. Uh, number thirty-one, similar in nature, year-end shortages in dental insurance accounts, two thousand eight hundred thirty-two dollars. I don't think there's a problem there. Uh, next one is, well, this is an interesting one. Transfer two hundred seventy-one thousand eighty-seven dollars in, to correct year-end shortages in medical insurance accounts. This one has the effect of putting money into the contingency, two hundred thirteen thousand seven dollars.
So this is where John hide all this money, something, so you put that line item, right?
We don't, we don't always take, we sometimes give it, you know? So that, transferring from hospital and medical into various other accounts, okay? Uh, the next one, number thirty-three, is a New York State grant into contracted services. Uh, this is a grant, uh, just access, and it's, you know, it's a small amount, one thousand three hundred five dollars from the grant into contracted services. Uh, the next one is number thirty-four.
The other grant.
From a grant into contracted services, but we're a little bit short. We had to come up with twelve thousand dollars from the contingency. So it's a budget sheet, budget transfer, the total revenue is fifty thousand five hundred dollars, but the expenditures is sixty-two thousand five hundred. You know, most of the money's from the grant, there's a private contribution of five hundred dollars, and to make it up, we need twelve thousand dollars from the contingency. Uh, number thirty-five, expend funds at first instance. Uh, we have the grant, uh, the grant monies, a total of twenty-six thousand eight hundred ninety dollars and twenty-five cents. Yeah, the, the expense was increased by thirty-five hundred dollars. So we have to transfer money from the, the New York State Aid in Culture and Education into general materials and supplies, thirty-five hundred dollars.
This for the bins? For the bins?
For the what?
The bins. The recycling bin?
Trash bins, no, no. Do you know what it's for, Doug?
The what?
Do you know what it's for, that?
You know what this thirty-five hundred is for?
Kingston Recycling Coordination Education Program.
Uh, the New York State Municipal Waste Reduction Recycling Grant. What exactly is it for? I can't recall.
Anybody was there? Wasn't there, I guess.
Oh, come on, you gotta, you gotta remember this stuff.
Hey, there was a bunch of other people there, too. Steve Shavitt was there. Steve, do you remember?
No.
Okay, obviously, you didn't have a problem with it, though, right?
No.
And Kevin and Julie were there, and they satisfied us.
Thirty-six?
Thirty-six is, uh, carryover, unspent grant monies from the Hudson River Estuary Program back from two thousand and fifteen. So the funding from the grant is for twenty-two thousand dollars, requires a match of just under four hundred thousand dollars, which has already been met by in-kind staff and volunteers, have no financial impact.
Thirty-six.
Okay?
Questions?
Uh, this was, that one was a big one, number thirty-seven, which we've discussed in two meetings. Bonding for five hundred sixty thousand dollars to fund the improvements in the Uptown Volunteer Fireman's Hall and Museum on Fair Street. And I think we've been through this quite extensively, we're talking bonding for five hundred sixty thousand dollars to make these improvements for critically needed for the metal roof, skylight, masonry restoration, wind replacement. And, you know, Phil Knowles has been here a couple times, and he brought several people with us to go with, with him to go over the details for that.
I did some communications today from, you know, people living uptown that sent letters in support of fixing the museum. If we get them in your pocket.
Okay, so that's resolution thirty-seven. Resolutions thirty-eight is the bond ordinance to support that. Uh, number thirty-nine, expend funds in the first instance for the Green Innovation Grant. We've been awarded a grant of a million two. And, let me see, a million two. Resolution authorized the mayor execute a grant agreement to expend funds in the first instance of a hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. That's the match.
Yep.
That's the match for the, to, to match the grant from the EFC.
Now, that's the midtown parking lot, is this the one over by the Little Italy? That park, is that midtown?
Uh, upgrades to three parking lots, Cornell Street, Broadway, and Broadway. Number forty, uh, number forty.
Can you say one more time where they're at, Doug?
Uh, there, there are three of them. One is at, uh, yeah, 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 fourteen eighteen Cornell Street, six.
Okay, I see it, second to none.
Yeah, it's in the, six fifty-eight Broadway and four eighty-two Broadway.
Okay.
So this is the match.
Thank you.
Uh, number forty is, uh.
Bond?
Bond ordinance for a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for the midtown parking lot improvement project.
Do I have any problems?
So why do we have a bond ordinance for forty and then a forty?
Hmm? Let's see, this is number forty.
Looking at number forty-one.
Forty-one's a bond ordinance.
Well, forty-one is the bond ordinance to support the resolution forty.
What was thirty-nine?
Thirty-nine, thirty-nine was, was not a bond ordinance, just to expend funds in the first instance uh, for the grant of a million two.
For the mayor to, to get the grant money, and then the second forty is for the bonds, and then adopting the bond, and forty-one is the bond ordinance.
Number one, so he can spend it.
Okay, so forty and forty-one.
Alright, I see.
The next one is, is to expend funds in the first instance for the, uh, for the Climate Smart Communities Grant from DEC for the Flatbush and Fox Hall Avenue project.
Give them a sound, they can give the sound.
Do you like that one?
Anybody have a problem with that?
But, but we're, uh, wait a minute, let's see.
Tony getting the sidewalks, no, I know.
Expend funds.
Tony's happy world.
The match, the match requirements of fifty percent, seven hundred seventy-two thousand.
Seven seventy-two, seven fifty-two.
Yeah, okay. Number forty-two. My bond ordinance in the sum of twenty-four thousand dollars, four hundred seventy, this is for the downtown, the, sorry, the waterfront. The waterfront resiliency project, that the people came and gave a presentation. Six or seven people came to present, they got a lot of support in the meeting. Uh, they just increased the scope, the scope of that to include, what was it, longer, to accommodate the longer boats, longer ships.
Deeper boat.
Deeper, okay, deeper, longer, bigger.
Bigger.
Yeah, bigger in both directions.
Tourist boats, those new signs, you know, that go up down.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, and, you know, that was pretty well, strongly supported. So bond ordinance for that, and the next one, number forty-four, is the bond ordinance for twenty-seven, five thousand dollars. Number forty-three, expend, expend funds in the first instance for Climate Smart Communities Grant from the DEC for the pedestrian and bicycle masterclass. The grant has been.
What, what number are you on?
Forty-five.
Oh, okay.
Forty, okay, forty-five? Uh, the grant, we have a grant, an amount of sixty thousand dollars, the, the city must match that with sixty thousand dollars. Which, let's see, that's gonna, uh, resolution authorizing the mayor to expend funds in terms of the pedestrian, but the estimated financial impact of fifty thousand dollars.
Total of a hundred twenty thousand, so matching frames are sixty thousand, and it's another, been awarded sixty thousand.
Right.
So sixty thousand impact.
In-kind donation and.
It says, estimated financial impact sixty thousand, Doug.
Yeah.
So, is that on top of that? Is there in-kind donations, bond, another grant, and private contributions, or is that it?
Matching fund. We've authorized the mayor to, to apply for a subsequent grant on this. In other words, the, the match could come from either in-kind or, or, or another grant.
So the sixty thousand is just the, the max, is that correct, that we would have? Because if we, we get some in-kind donations, if we get another grant, that would knock down the sixty thousand, correct?
The total project is a hundred twenty thousand dollars. We have a grant from DEC for sixty, we have to come up with sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but if you look at the segment where this is our expected through in-kind, the, so the managing funding requirements, the sixty thousand dollars are expected through in-kind donation, force account, private, you know, so the sixty thousand may actually end up being less than sixty thousand.
Yeah, yeah.
So the sixty thousand, this estimated financial impact. So the sixty thousand, this estimated financial impact is the max, cause hopefully that'll be the maximum.
Is the max, right.
But they didn't have that, all, all that information at the time.
Right, the city's gonna have to come up with another sixty thousand dollars for the match.
Or, yeah.
Or get the in-kind or contributions or.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, that's the max, they just didn't have all that.
Right, we didn't know.
Right. But I don't see any bonding or anything for it, so you must have figured it out.
There's a little bit of to be determined here.
They may have to come back.
There may be another shoe to fall on that. Uh, the next one, number forty-six, is the bond ordinance. This is more bookkeeping than anything else, this, this was, fifty thousand dollars was previously authorized and bonded for the Twofsky Creek drainage analysis, we, we did that back in February last year. And then the contractor, the designer tie-in bond, uh, came up with an additional small amount of work that creates, requires another fourteen hundred dollars on top of fifty thousand dollars, so it's like another couple percent. And in order to keep it all in one package, John recommended, John Tui, that we just increase the bond from fifty thousand dollars to include an additional fourteen hundred dollars. Next one, forty-seven, is the bond ordinance, so. Uh, number forty-eight is, uh, we have a grant of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from DEC for the Franklin Street Complete Street Projects. Matching funds of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars are required, this author, this resolution is to authorize the mayor to expend funds in the first instance. And this is just like the previous one, there's another match requirement of seven, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars expected, either through the usual.
What's force account, that's what?
Yeah, I don't know. What is a force account?
Force account?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that, because I.
It goes, or expected through in-kind donation, force account, bond, another grant, and private contributions, force account.
Yeah, I mean, and I think this one, if I remember, was in-kind services, cause they're doing some things, they're doing like the, I think, the water lines also on the street and things like that, so.
But the grant is for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, we have it authorized the mayor to start spending money on this, but yet we have to come up with a.
Could you find out with that force account, like that definition of a force account?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked.
Put out numbers to ask too, you know.
Yeah, just, you know, cause it usually says that in my force account.
Every time I read that, I say, I gotta ask John what he means that, you know, I do, it's a pleasure.
That's a force account.
We'll get that clarified.
Thank you.
Uh, so the next, all right, next one is, uh, number forty-nine. Resolution, uh, adopting a bond ordinance in the sum of a million five for appropriating funds to complete the Franklin Street Complete Streets and Sidewalk Restoration Process. So authorizing a bond to complete.
And the next one is the bond.
Uh, the, that, well, we, we will, the, 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 the total project cost is a million five, we, we'll get a seven hundred fifty thousand from the grant. But, we, John wants the bond for a million five, and then use half of that to repay. Yeah, once, once we're reimbursed by the, by the, by the DEC, we can use that to repay off the bond. But in order to get it going, who wants to get the whole million five, subsequently will be reimbursed for seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, which will be used to repay the bond.
Okay.
Uh, that, the next one is the bond ordinance for that. Uh, and I think this is.
Fifty-one CPF.
The penultimate one, approving the hiring of, of RBT, uh, as the CP, CPAs as the city's auditor, which we've used for a number of years, and they do work for Miltown and Newburgh, and a lot of, many municipalities. They had the low bid, and although we went, we went through a process where six or seven bids were received, and, uh, uh, there was a lot of due diligence doing, done on this, and.
Aren't they locking their price in for a few years too, Doug, like five?
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
They're gonna lock in for five years or something.
They'll log it in for five years, yeah, thank you, all right. Next one is number fifty-two, modifications to the city's clerk budget, uh, taking grant monies and expending them. A mil-, a hundred thousand dollars from New York State grant revenue into building maintenance contracted services. So we have the New York State Grant in this to, to expend the funds. City Hall Energy Efficiency Upgrades, which I think includes, what, windows and LED, I can't remember all, do you?
Here in the city hall?
Yeah.
Yeah, new, new, uh, thermal panes, I think, that would go on.
Yeah, yeah, I can't remember all. And, uh, that's it, um, finally, we had a, we had a busy month.
We spent a lot of money.
Fifty-three. Well, there's a lot of money coming in too.
Did you take that beverage out?
A lot of money coming in.
You took that one warehouse out of there?
Yes. I think you're right, is that what happened, the one, the warehouse was changed?
We have this up here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The warehouse, the third warehouse was removed, and I learned some additional language, it is three point zero, three point three, which, uh, gives, uh, the county the ability to make changes and respond to, uh, the people that ride the bus as well as any issues that the city raises.
Yeah, so in laws and rules, we talked about, just kind of what Kevin said, um, for the folks who weren't there, um, talking about having this a little stronger language, so that's in three point oh three, so that would be different, what you have in your hand, different from what you originally had. Um, we talked about it in laws and rules that change, so. Three point oh three. This, Elisa just handed this out today.
So I may have any questions?
And, and then the warehouse we addressed, um, cause it was, the original warehouse had something.
So the obligation.
The city had struggled to meet its federal and state, and we, we wanted that removed, so it wasn't a.
So we just struck that.
Yeah, and you could see that, Elisa, he gave us a new packet.
Is that the own thing?
Any other?
Bold that, and in the, in the actual agreement, three point oh three, there's additional language, which is, both of those we discussed at laws and rules.
Those were the only issues brought to my attention. Dennis, you're familiar with force accounts, aren't you?
Yeah.
So, so basically, when there's work that hasn't, uh, been anticipated, and the project requires additional work, and a contractor and DOT can't agree on a price, that, um, they, they, they monitor it, and it's, it's something that neither one really liked doing, but in order to get the contractor compensated, they, uh, basically work through it and monitor the amount of time and, and effort that the contractor puts in to getting the work done, so, so he's paid.
Yeah, the best example in the city case, the recent one, is the rendezvous, where you basically have a force account with NICE dot to essentially do your super work with respect to the rendezvous. That's really just a force account, that basically say, we'll pay, we'll pay NICE dot to contract, we're your contractor, and do our super work.
Okay.
Yeah, I think my, is that right?
All right, thank you.
You had to, you said five hundred something dollars. Okay, so resolution fifty-three, any discussion? Anybody okay with it? Pat?
You know, transportation is such an important issue for the people of the city of Kingston. Uh, to give up our bus system is a, uh, a pretty, uh, pretty final type of, uh, action. Transportation is, uh, high on the list of, um, needs that people have, along with food and water and shelter, and in this day and age, transportation's right up there. To give it up is, uh, is a big deal. Um, I know right now, we receive about fifty percent of the county's funding, um, and I'm wondering, you know, when we consolidate, will Kingston still get that fifty percent? I know we have to bargain for it, or whatever the mayor has to do, he goes into, into a room, and they all figure out how much they're gonna get.
Need for the bus transportation?
Yeah.
No, you won't get it, they'll get all, all the additional.
I understand that.
Okay. I thought you just.
But will it be put back into our city at fifty percent?
Oh, I see.
Will we be getting that fifty percent back, or will we be getting thirty percent back, twenty percent back, or whatever the county decides? So, you, we have to think about that, uh, when we are transporting our people around town. Are we going to get the same service, uh, that we are providing now for, for our system? I know in my ward, uh, from what I've seen, that's not true. I have a bus that goes right down Clifton Avenue, I have a steep hill, um, that runs off of, it's a, uh, a shoal, I would say, runs all the way from Kingston Hospital all the way, uh, up to the mall, that same hill you see there, it's, it's all made out of the same rock, goes all the way across Kingston there. And, uh, uh, traffic on Flatbush Avenue, very dangerous, and, uh, so to walk down Flatbush Avenue is just, uh, as Tony can tell, that's his ward, uh, dangerous, right, Tony? I mean, I've seen cars go, I've seen tractor trailers go sideways down that, that street in the wintertime. Stephan Street, dangerous, no sidewalks on that street, going down that hill in the wintertime? There's houses that have huge posts out in front of them, cause cars have gone through the front, front, front porches, and you know the one I'm talking about, Tony, there in the corner? Front porch, how the cars go right through it, not just once or twice, this is like regular, dangerous. Uh, I wouldn't want anybody walking down there. So, uh, and then, of course, if I go down the street, uh, what do I have, Shoobelt Street, no sidewalks, dangerous, hill, terrible. I can't imagine, I know the kids love to slay ride down that in the, in the, in the wintertime, uh, when the, that's how, it's a great sleigh riding hill. Uh, I can't imagine, uh, what it's like with a baby carriage, or, or, you know, transporting your food back to your house in the wintertime. Um, and then the next one, Wine Coop, is a, is actually a brick, cobblestone street, uh, with, uh, I've been down it, believe me, I slipped down it myself in the middle of the summertime. It's got, uh, moss growing on it and everything else, it's really not a street you wanna be walking up and down, so anywhere from the top of that hill down. So, East Chester Street, all those homes back there, all the homes behind Mickey Ziggler, which is called East Chester Street Extension, um, are not in any call zone or anything, I'm very concerned for my constituents. Right now, we got a nice bus comes right down Clifton Avenue, they can all access that, that'd be gone. So my constituents are getting less service. My constituents are being put in a dangerous situation, so I'm gonna vote no.
Well, you're saying you'd like to see your, uh, area expanded into the Quahal area?
I would like to see that, if this is gonna go through, I would like to see that. But I'm wondering, you know, why they're not, you know, even with this, you know, the people who've been looking at this, why would they do that, these people? Why would they just block that whole section out? Is there no ridership in my neighborhood? I know there's, it's probably not great ridership, but there's some ridership, and people need, people are gonna, some people are gonna need that transportation, and when you don't have it, boy, is it vital. So I'm concerned about, um, a lot of things, you know? I'm concerned that we're just giving it up too, you know, our, uh, you know, we kinda let this go, we all know we did, right? We all know the city of Kingston let this thing go down the tubes, and they just let it go, and let it go, and let it go, and it's in the place it is now. It's not because we can't run a bus system, it's because we chose not to run a bus system. We can choose to fix our bus system, we can choose to make it green, make it, uh, make it better. I think that's the, you know, from all the rationale I hear why we're giving up our bus system, it's because we just let it go. It's terrible, it's just a shame. We let it go, so I'm concerned, you know, about, you know, what are our real reasons why we're, why we're getting rid of this bus system? Is it because it's gonna be better, or is it because we just don't wanna deal with it? And then, and then, you know, think of all the people that'll be affected by that, and again, also think about, will we be getting, will we be getting the same service? Can we put buses where we wanna put them for people like my constituents, who right now are in a non-zone, who are gonna have to walk through dangerous situations? Will we be able to handle those situations, will we be able to deal with those situations? I live in the city of Kingston, and all of you do too, if we were able, if we're sitting at this table, we'd get that thing done, but we're not gonna be sitting here. We're gonna be talking to people, uh, from Platte Hill or wherever, saying, hey, would you please put a, please, please, put a, put some buses up on our hill here? And what are they gonna say? And we have, and you know, you know, I was thinking about what you said to me too, about our representation here in town, we got three legislators in town, there's twenty-three of those guys, that's only three out of twenty-three. If you do the math on that, that's not a high percentage. There's, there's twenty other legislators gonna vote either to give us money for our transportation system, or not. And they're not from Kingston, they're not from around Kingston, many of them, some of them are from around Kingston, but many of them are, are miles and miles and miles and miles away, and, uh, they're gonna be making decisions for our town. So I want everybody just to think about that, uh, think about, will we be getting the funding we need? Think about why we're giving up this system, um, and think about, uh, it's permanent, and after we do this, guys, we don't have control any longer. We have no control any longer.
All right, we get you.
All right.
I mean, I, I understand completely where Pat's coming from, especially about, um, constituents that are not gonna have any service now. And what I was told is, which is, I was told, cause I asked, you know, did you talk to these people, you talk to the public, about not having the bus service here, or having a bus service here, and I was told that, yes, many of them said, we don't need the bus, which I find hard to, hard to believe. So, I'm not even gonna tell you who told me that, but I find that hard to believe. And I just can't imagine people saying, that people that don't have transportation saying, we don't need it here.
I just keep thinking about those people that don't have transportation. Boy, are they stuck.
Let Andrea go, and then I'll, I'll get you on Dennis, all right?
The, I mean, I've mentioned this in laws and rules, so, and all of the proposed routes, and I think the proposed direct, the, demand, um, are proposed now, but they all have to go through a federal process of this, there's no way that they could ju, the county could just take over.
So this is not final?
This is not final.
This is a proposed plan.
So it's just important that we are all active, if this goes through, that we are all active to make sure that our constituents get the best service that they deserve. But these aren't, these are all just proposed, this isn't set in stone, these are.
So are we then, uh, what we're doing here tonight now, this is, um, authorizing the county to go ahead and do what they need to do to figure this out, or to?
I, I, the.
It, the, the resolution.
Who's, who answers that question?
The, the resolution that we're, would be voting on tomorrow is for the, to go into the contract saying, and so, approving and entering the, into the, an agreement with also counting to provide expanded transit service in the city of Kingston.
So that means, and the night's authorization means that we are letting the county now take over Kingston City Transit Service.
Yes.
With proposed change, I, that doesn't.
Well, we, I don't think you can have, correct me if I'm wrong, please, Dennis, but I don't think we can have the exact, we can have the exact routes.
Well.
Until it, until you actually take it over, right?
Let me just, if I may.
Go ahead, Dennis.
Thank you. Um, a couple of things, one is, is let me, let me circle back to, to the dollar question. The first question I think that got asked is, is does the, does the city quote get a fair share in terms of its existing, uh, split versus what it's going to get in the future? What I would say to you with regard to that is, is that the design of the routes that are proposed, essentially were designed not to save the money with respect to the amount of dollars being spent in the city of Kingston. So if you look at the cost to the county to run those routes, we believe it's similar, if not, if not a little bit more. The, the savings here are literally on, on the basis of some of the administrative cost savings, but the cost of route running is essentially the same. So in terms of dollars, uh, you get right now, we anticipate that we'll expand similar amounts of dollars within the city with respect to running, running the routes that are, that are, are proposed. The thing I think is, is, another critical is in terms of you being a designated recipient and using this for, I'm using the money, is the city currently spends its entire federal map on operations. the city currently spends its entire federal map on operations. The key to that is, is that you have some significant capital dollars that you're going to have to expend in the future. And one of the risks that the county takes with respect to this is finding the money for those capital dollars to replace your buses as they age out, and replace our own buses as they age out. So, we don't look at this as essentially being able to, uh, save money as it relates to the county's operation, or trying to pull money out of the city so that we can use it for the county's operation. Um, we look at this as essentially, the county is going to assume some of the city's risk with respect to its capital needs going into the future. Um, with regard to where the routes run, one of the things that you should know is, is that, um, the entire city is within a, is within the zone that's EDA accessible. So, your paratransit needs and our paratransit service in the city for those folks that are disabled, et cetera, is effectively the entire city. Um, so, when you look at the demand response zones, the demand response zones are effectively set up to deal with the fact that what we try to do, and one of the difficulties of running the routes that you currently run is something called headway times. So, if you're trying to get from downtown Kingston to uptown, it's literally over an hour, given your current bus routes. Because of the neighborhoods, the neighborhood routing that occurs. We tried to essentially make sure that we could run, uh, bus routes that had no more than a half hour headway time. And some of these routes, I think, have less than fifteen or twenty minutes headway time, and we've driven all of these routes. The idea, our, our idea being is, is that the utilization of transit is not only where it goes, but how fast it gets there. Uh, and what we're trying to make sure is, is that when we do this service within the city, that we can get people to destinations they need to get to in a reasonable point in time. That will help us essentially expand the ridership from what is now essentially a captured rider system. If you look at your ridership, your ridership increases when, at the end of the month, or at the beginning of the month, when social security checks come due, or other kinds of things, or people have to visit social services departments. That's typically where your ridership goes. So, that's one. The other thing I, I think we started to address, and I think, uh, Andrea started to address it, is the routes themselves in terms of the, the overall, particularly the major, the major routes up, up Kingston, Flatbush Avenue, and some of the blue routes, there, there are actually three major routes that are, that are in there, are pretty much set in terms of our route optimization work. When we did route optimization work, we looked at all of your ridership data for all your routes. We looked at all the destinations that are out there, and we looked particularly at low and moderate income destinations that were out there to make sure that we could service them on major routes. The demand response moves out in those, those communities where we no longer, where you no longer provide neighborhood service. The give back essentially to be able to run these major routes in a timely fashion is essentially you can't run through every neighborhood in order to make it work. What we came up with in looking at that is essentially to provide these demand response routes. Now, in order for us to essentially change the routes in the city of Kingston, we have to go through a federal process. We've gone out for one public hearing, I think maybe two public meetings with respect to this, but we're gonna come, have to come back and go back through the public meeting process one more time, probably multiple more times, as we look at, as we look to amend these routes. We'll look at those comments and then decide whether or not we have to amend the routes as they're proposed to more accurately reflect those comments that we receive from the public, and quite frankly, from others, the businesses, the businesses, and from the elected officials. As we look at that, we'll have, we'll come back with a new route system. I don't see, given, given what we're doing in terms of headways and everything else, major shifts as it relates to the routes that we're proposing to run. As we look at Broadway, you look at the areas on Washington Avenue, you look at how we run through uptown, et cetera. How we run our demand response service, those are zones, and they're looked at as zones. But I can tell you that, and typically what, what ends up happening is if you find you're getting calls from, from people that are outside zones, we'll respond to those calls. If you find that we have a zone that's set up that nobody's calling from, we'll probably respond to that as well. So, if you think about this, we run an extremely organic system that's responsive to the needs of the community, and we've proven that time and time again. Um, one of the things, and, and I, I can't tell you that giving up control is, is something that, that, that you, you have to make that decision. But what I can tell you is, is that our entire philosophy with respect to running our transit system is to be responsive to the needs of a community. It's a larger community in, in some instances, but I can tell you, we continue to have discussions with respect to sororities, in terms of how we run through sororities. We run an expanded bus service in, in New Paltz, we continue to have discussions with New Paltz about that expanded bus system, of where it runs and how it runs. We will continue to have discussions with the city of Kingston, its residents, its businesses, and its elected officials in terms of, in terms of the effectiveness and the effect, and, and, and the, and the, and the way that we, we run this system within the city. It's an open and public and transparent process. It's not made in, in a vacuum, nor by individual legislators, or, or the twenty-three legislators. It's, it's driven by data, and it's driven by, and it's driven by demand. And that's what we've done all, that's what we've done constantly throughout this, throughout all of our, and we've made changes since two thousand and three. Right on up to two thousand and sixteen, we continue to make changes on our routes at the county level.
What, what's the timeline of, you know, so what happens? Cause there has to be public hearings for any routes to change.
Public meetings, there's different.
Public, public meetings, sorry.
Meetings, not hearings, but yes.
Um, but, um, what is the time, so is it, we keep the Kingston, the same routes until that happens, or even if the county takes over?
We would, we would probably do the public, if, if we're gonna take over, we certainly don't wanna take the system over and run the same routes that we're running now. So, we would do the hearings prior to that July date, assuming that we can make the July date, given where we are now. We would probably do those meetings prior to that. And we have the discussion prior to that, so that we, we have to get flyers out, we have to get, uh, public information out, we have to change the routes, we have to get our schedules out. All those things have to be done. So, there's quite a bit of spade work that needs to get done prior to us assuming service. Uh, so, I would, I would presume that we would actually start this months ahead of time. Once the decision has been made to essentially to move forward.
Which is where we are right now.
Which is where we are right now. At the county, at the city level, the county level, we haven't introduced that resolution, waiting to see whether the city wanted to move forward.
I just have one question, cause there's all these maps and everything, and now this is black and white. And, and I, see if you notice, Dennis, cause the red route, uh, what is the main loop here for this red route? Do you know offhand?
I'm sorry.
The red route, you have three routes, red, blue, and yellow, right? And again, I can't really tell from here and these maps.
Yeah.
What are.
Yeah, that's the route that essentially runs the, the Washington Avenue section, picks up Golden Hill, picks up some of those destinations out in that area. I think, uh, Gateway is out in that area as well. Then it also comes back and moves into the area associated with the uptown area, particularly as it relates to getting, make sure we get people the trailway, make sure we can get people down to, uh, down to the Plaza. So, and we're also establishing hubs here, so you're seeing hub, you, you're seeing hubs be located at, um, uh, at the Plaza, at Social Services, and we're looking at a hub down on Broadway, at the Flatbush intersection, or the thing? At the Flatbush intersection down there as well. So, they would be transfer points, and the current discussion would be that those transfer points would effectively be a free transfer. So, that you could get from one bus to the other. In addition, one of the things the county has been able to obtain is we believe that we're gonna have funding available to cover rides within the city of Kingston for free for the first six months. The idea being is to get those folks used to riding the system, to introduce other, new people to ride that system as well. So, that's where we are right now. So, that's, we also have a little bit different technology on our buses than you do. We're, we'd be looking at essentially making sure that we have, uh, an app technology on the bus that tells you where the bus is and when it's gonna get to you. Uh, that's available now on all the county buses. We also have, um, in our, on our buses, a significant amount of technology that lets us make sure we know, we can track boardings and alightings. So, we'll be able to essentially give you who's getting on the bus, where they're getting on the bus, how many boardings and alightings that we have.
Alrighty, so what's, what's, what's changed on the red route? What's, what, what's some of the major, off the head, I know you won't, won't be able to say, everyone.
Yeah.
What's off the red route, if you could?
I, I mean, if you're gonna ask me details about route, I'm the wrong person to ask.
Alright.
The, the, the person to ask with respect to that details, number one is that we do have a map that shows the existing routes versus the proposed routes in terms of major routes. The other thing is to talk to, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the folks at, at UCAT in terms of, in terms of that routing.
Alright.
Uh, but what I, what I would say is we have some confidence, given the fact that we've driven these routes, that the timing of these routes is, we'll be able to make. That we're not just basically looking at this and, and count, calculate distances and, and speed limits. We're actually going out with the buses and drove the routes, so that we could make sure that the timing would work.
That would be Carol Hargrove?
That's correct.
Who?
I'd be, Carol Hargrove. I had, if you were my, send me a message, I could get you her.
Okay.
But it's on the.
Let's, let's be candid, make no mistake about it, these are significant changes to the way the current system runs.
Mm-hmm.
The current system is not successful. And what I would say to you is that continuing to run, if you decide not to move forward, continuing to run the current system in its current format is not a recipe for success. You went from about a hundred and fifty thousand riders to less than fifty thousand riders. That's not a recipe for success.
Just have to take into account.
So, Carol Hargrove would be able to give me the information I need, with the current and the new routes are being.
I think she could give you information in terms of the, the proposed route, whether she can give you information on the current city routes. That, I would presume would come from Tony Rose.
Okay. Dennis, Dennis, right?
Yes, it is.
Dennis, Patrick O'Reilly, Dennis, um, does paratransit cost any money for the riders?
Yes.
It does cost money.
Uh, there are waivers for, for those based on income. Um, and we do have special, uh, special, uh, special agreements that exist in some, for some agencies, actually pay fees, some of the agencies actually pay fees. But in general, paratransit has a cost associated with it.
And what's the max cost for a paratransit ride, do you know, fifteen bucks?
Oh, gosh, no, oh, no.
Five bucks?
It's similar, it, I think the only difference is, is because it's a home pickup versus a, a route pickup, it's an extra fifty cents.
Okay, how about the other pickups that, uh, these are, these, thank you, these call, here, go, Tony, these call areas?
I think what we're, what we.
Would they be extra charged too?
What we've said is, is that we're going to make sure that we maintain the existing fare structure within the city. I think it's a hun, it's a dollar fifty anywhere in the city now. Trying to think whether you lowered it to a dollar or you went back up again, I'm not sure. We're gonna try to maintain that existing fare structure within the city.
So, with the call, if I call, they would get that, and how long?
Maybe an extra fifty cents.
Maybe an extra fifty, and how long would, uh, the time I call to when I could get a bus?
Probably what they're gonna end up doing is to schedule it, so you'll call the day before.
So, twenty-four hours?
Twenty-four hours, and then they would schedule it in, and if they're picking up in one area, they would pick up all of those folks in a, in a scheduled area.
And what I have heard, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if it's like a consistent thing, like every Tuesday, they could have that.
That's exactly what.
So, they, every Tuesday, yeah, they could have that set up, so they don't have to call every Monday night.
Yeah, that's nice, yeah.
So, all this information is going to be put out to the public and to the riders?
When you say, I, I always, I always sort of need to qualify, when you say all, I don't, I'm not sure what's.
What we're talking about right now?
Well.
Well, I mean, um, the riders are gonna be, they're gonna know that they can call.
Yes.
Schedule, pick a time, and they don't have much, and far advanced they are to do it, and.
Yes.
Dennis, can you talk, can you tell me a little bit about, uh, how, uh, who's in charge of the bus system? It's Carol, correct? She's, she's the head of the bus system?
That's correct.
Who is her immediately, her immediate boss?
She, she reports to a deputy county executive.
And a deputy county executive reports to the county executive, is that correct? So, keep in mind, everyone, okay, we have a county executive that is very pro-Kingston right now. Um, and, uh, that's, that's good for us. Uh, what happens if we get someone in that same, hang on, we get someone in that same position? That is not as, uh, you know, as, uh.
Pro-Kingston.
Pro-Kingston as, as, uh, Mr. Heine is, or maybe even Patrick.
He is no longer there.
Well, his administration, his old administration's still there, is that correct? So, and, uh, so, if Patrick comes in.
Exactly, I'm just visiting, I digress.
I'm just saying, and then, and then who's next? And, you know, we're, that's, that's where we have to think, we have to think far down the road, not, not this administration. Think of other administrations, think when things go bad, think when, uh, you know, I mean, sometimes you have to think about the worst case scenario.
Well, I think we also have to think about the alternative, though, if we don't do this, um, what are the repercussions?
The alternative is we get on our bike and we ride it, Rita, we get up and we fix this thing.
Well, I think that'd be an additional charge to the budget, be like, a minimum three hundred thousand, cause you gotta hire more people, they're running like a skeleton crew now.
I know, because we let it go.
Right?
Yeah, so you got to be, have to hire more people, I'm sorry.
I just wanna speak to what, what Pat is speaking about. We don't know what the future holds for, for, for sure. I can tell you, I worked for the county for thirty-two years, and I don't think there was one decision that we made collectively that would not be to the benefit of our citizens. I don't think Ulster County now is gonna do anything that's not, at least what they consider beneficial to the citizens, um.
I don't either, so.
And let's, our citizens are their citizens too.
Yes, I understand that.
I think they're gonna do everything in their power to make this a, a really good system. If I had my brothers.
This president, you're talking about this president administration, you're right.
Yeah, well, not, hey, thirty-two years, I was through a lot of administrations there. I went through a lot of, you know, county administrators, county executives, whatever, heads of my department. Um, but it all, it always come out the same. We did what was best for our constituents there. Um, whether it meant keeping the county building open later to provide more services, working weekends once in a while to provide better services. That's what the county is all about. I feel comfortable that's gonna be forever, I don't think that's ever gonna change. Uh, the people that work for the county are in it to help people. I mean, that, that's the bottom line.
I'm not saying.
If I had my brothers, yes, I would rather we maintain our own system, but to make these kind of improvements, I don't think we can afford it.
I'm not saying that's the only, just, the, 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 the bus system's fantastic, uh, they do a great job, I'm not saying that. I am concerned about what might happen.
I would say this, just as we have to go through a process to add routes, we also have to go through a process to take away routes. So, you would have a similar process at the federal level and at the county level in terms of meetings and, and hearings, and, and public information meetings if we decided that we're gonna take away routes. That's the first protection that, that, that the community has, that, as well as the elected officials. The second thing is, is that funding for these things runs through the Transportation Council. Uh, the city of Kingston, the city of the Republicans, that Transportation Council. And so, you have a voice, indeed, a very powerful voice, Transportation Council with respect to funding and how it's used.
Who's on the Transportation Council?
Transportation Council consists of the chief elected officials from many of the municipalities, and then for the rural communities.
So, our mayor's on this council?
Mayor's on that council, and he's represented every meeting by either members of the, of the, uh, of the mayor's staff and/or from the engineering department. And to give you an example, um, the federal fiscal year two thousand and sixteen, fifty-three oh seven money, which is transit money associated with this, um, was agreed to with a technical committee meeting between the city and the county. It's nine hundred and sixty-seven, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to be split fifty-fifty, so that you could, we could make sure that you could make your payments on costs that you've already incurred with respect to running the system. It'll be voted on at the next policy committee meeting, which is at the end of, at the end of, uh, end of this month. Um, and that's the kind of, that's the kind of cooperation, co, collaboration that you see with the Transportation Council. The studies that you, we just talked about here, that funding was requested by the city of Kingston to the Transportation Council. The Transportation Council responded and funded that study.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else have anything to say, because you wanna take a straw boat, wanna just wait till tomorrow, what's your question? Decide tomorrow.
Thank you. Give me a minute. These are all the same falls, this, this is.
That's a straw.
That's all the same.
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 Okay, so we're gonna move on to that.
Love surprises.
Go ahead, I already know the vocals. Yes or no?
Yes.
What is this?
A voting, yes or no?
Straw. I haven't made a decision yet.
Undecided?
Undecided.
Okay, Pat?
No.
Right now, we got out of seven members, five in favor, one undecided, one in the numbers, just so everybody knows. Two members are out.
Alright, Ken? Alright, thank you.
Okay, we're going to the second meeting of, uh, Local Law Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fine.
You're welcome.
Great.
Questions to fire up, to, to change, to build a or this is us making building safety, but we can have five thousand and questions on it?
No, I don't think so. I guess it came to us, we all seem to have any questions.
Alright, any questions on, uh, Local Law, come to, or you come on up? No, okay. Steve, what, what did you vote on?
Um, removal, remove all the fifty-minute parking, um, thing.
Okay, anybody have a problem with that?
Making the planning board leaving and see for the upper brick yards.
Any questions? No?
I know we're
Ted?
Oh, no.
The parking, the, uh
Pointing for the, uh
Bill too.
David Niles.
David Niles?
David Niles.
What about David Niles?
Thank you for getting that.
He's just being, recommended to be voted on to serve on the assessment for review. That's our decision, the council's decision, so if anybody has a problem with that?
I'm sorry, I missed it, I missed it. Tony was waiting.
To have somebody sit on the second floor.
With the recommendation.
We make that up.
Recommendation.
And do we
My, it's coming, the council is in for its full disclosure.
So that's, we vote on that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Remember, you voted on a committee.
Right.
Okay, cause you're one shy and we need to fill those positions, so when they come to the
It's been waiting for at least six months.
They have, they need
Assessment.
Do we fill any other positions, Steve?
Well, they're still there, they come up.
No, that's the only commission though that we fill, the council fills.
But when they become vacant, then we fill it.
Yeah. That's the only one that we have to power over?
Yeah.
Assessor, assessor, this was, assessor? What was the department, was this, or committee?
The assessor.
Assessor, okay.
Jim, can I just?
Okay, so can I just say? We don't wanna be in committee now, right?
I just wanna say something. Um, I spoke to Patrick, actually, I'm looking at, under old business, we're going back to public safety. Um, the legislation last month was to repeal the sign on twenty-six. Shoe fell. There's one there now.
I didn't put that in, to repeal anything?
It was there.
I don't know, who put that in?
Well, because we didn't know, you weren't here at the meeting right before council. So we decided to pass that and then we sent it back to committee because we didn't want that.
Right.
So we still don't wanna repeal that. We don't wanna repeal it.
We just want that to die down.
We wanna leave the two signs there, right?
So you have one on the side sheet, one in the front?
Right.
That's what the homeowner would like.
Right, and that's what's there right now.
It is, you s, yes, you looked at that, right, Steve?
I thought they didn't have one, you would put
Cause they put it in.
Well, they put it in, no.
They put it in now.
So we wanna leave it there, but the, the old legislation was to repeal the one on twenty-six, but we don't wanna do that.
So we went back
Did you get a committee report and everything on it?
For repealing?
You did.
We did.
Again?
But then we
Second time?
We actually, I requested it be sent back to committee before we passed it.
Okay, so then it's just eyes, it's
Do anything, right? Yeah, it'll just go away.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just gonna get a motion, go out of caucus.
Motion.
Favor.
Second.
Okay, Andrea, you have something?
Uh, well, no, just the parade is on Sunday.